Good evening, DJ, everyone of you all. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Commissioner, thank you for being here, and staff, thank you as well. Ms. Jacob, thank you for being here. Madam Attorney, thank you. We do appreciate you each and every month that you're here at our Commissioner meeting. This present time will start, and the ones on live feed, thank you for being a part of this meeting as well. This present time, Madam Clerk, call the role, please.
Commissioner Polk.
President.
Vice Mayor McCalvin.
President.
Mayor Cal.
President. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Commissioners. We'll continue on a discussion of agenda item tonight. The first item is reference to, we'll start off with a roll call, have a roll call. We have prayer and prayers at least, disclosure voting conflict. Presentation of proclamation tonight, opportunity for the public to address the Commission consent agenda. In reference to consent, Commissioner meeting in October the 21st of 2025, and approve of city amendment, Commissioner meeting, agenda November 4th, 2025. Mr. Manager, in addition or deletion to this particular agenda, sir?
Yes, sir. Mayor, we will have an addition add-on. It will be Resolution Number 63-2025. The resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, Canceling the December 2nd, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, Provided for Adoption, Representation, and Effective Date." So I'll discuss that item in order, 61, 62, then 63.
Give me that resolution.
Resolution Number 63-2025.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Any question from the Commission in reference to the consent agenda? Thank you. Resolution 61-2025. Madam Clerk, for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, authorizing the City Manager's Execution of the Attached State of Florida Department of Commerce Grant Agreement, Number HL312, as Exhibit A, Providing for Adoption of Representation, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. City Manager Cal.
Mayor Commission, this is one of your legislative items. We finally got the agreement from the Department of Commerce in the amount of $875,000. The funding on the disagreement will be used for the preliminary engineering and design of the, excuse me, of the development of the regional commerce park. The commerce park will serve as a hub for economic development in the Glaze Region, allowing the city the opportunity to market the commerce park to various corporate entities. Staff has recommended approval of Resolution and the Resolution Number 61-2025, and the acceptance of the grant agreement number HL313.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions from this Commission for Resolution 61-2025? You're non? We'll continue. Resolution 62-2025. Madam Clerk, for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, relating to finances providing for amendments to the fiscal year budget beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025, approving associated budget amendments, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Manager Cal.
Mayor Commission, on September 18th, 2024, the City Commission adopted Resolution 42-2024, setting forth the appropriations for the general fund budget estimated for the fiscal year 2024-2025 in the amount of $2,619,957. It is necessary to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget to recognize an increase in the general fund budget by $433,660, which would represent additional revenues and fund balance as outlined on Budget Amendment Number 1, Page 2. In amending the budget, it is further necessary to recognize additional expenses as follows: An increase of $16,500 in Legislative Department, An increase of $29,185 in the City Manager Department, An increase of $16,500 in the City Clerks, An increase in $17,900 in the Finance Department, An increase of $130,665 in the General Government Department, An increase of $159,755 in the Community Development Department, An increase of $9,910 in the Public Safety Department, And an increase of $15,345 in Parks and Recreation Department, And an increase of $37,900 in the Public Works Department. Staff will be recommending this budget resolution, 62-2025, budget amendment that would close out the fiscal year budget beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, with a balanced budget.
Thank you, City Manager Cal. Any questions from this Commission for Resolution 62-2025?
Do have one question.
Commissioner Polk?
My thought is, I know we made some arrangements with the, in the Legislative Department per the annual federal conferences. And we took, took the number down, number of Commissions that would travel to the conference to try to make so that we can keep that department balanced. But what, what are we doing in these other departments to make sure that we live within the adopted budget?
The, for fiscal year 2025, this current fiscal year that we're in, is all departments were reduced with travel. There are adjustments in conferences, the number of conferences that, or trainees that would take place department-wide, I mean, citywide. So it wasn't only the Commission. There was even with the, just speaking from City Manager's office, the most recent City Managers Conference where classes, you know, classes and training took place. They, we took that hit. Human Resources also, City Clerks, we all, every department, training or conferences have been reduced.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Thank you, City Manager Cal. Any additional question at this present time for Resolution 62-2025? You're non? We'll continue on agenda for the night. What was the order? Mr. School report?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, they addressed the resolution to add-on, 63-2025. That's okay, Mayor.
I had written in front of me, too.
Resolution 63-2025, Resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, canceling the December 2nd, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, Providing for Adoption of Representation, Providing for an Effective Date. And I do apologize, Madam Clerk, now the City Manager would go into, it's just, the City, the City Manager is asking, due to a conflict with the City Manager being unavailable to attend the meeting, I'll be asking the Commission to cancel that regular Commission meeting date on December 2nd. If we could have any conversation about it.
Any question from this Commission in reference to that particular cancellation of the meeting? You're non? Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Cal. We'll continue with.
Just, Mayor, I don't want this to get away from anyone that, understanding canceling the meeting, December 2nd, the, there's no meeting, you already not scheduled to meet on December 16th. That Commission meeting, so we won't have any meetings in December. There are no pressing items that are time-sensitive. I can honestly answer that question with the Commission that there are no time-sensitive items coming from any entity that we need to address in December that we, that will hold the city back from operating successfully. So that is the add-on item, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do appreciate that. As our, this Commissioner will discuss and vote on this end at a regular meeting this afternoon. Thank you, sir, and I do appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Rose, all of them, Mr. School report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Principal Hightower will be at our regular meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Financial report. Treasurer?
Yeah, I'm gonna move that. We would table it to the following meeting.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Polk. City Clerk's report?
Sorry, sir. The only report that I have is that the travel package should be ready by November 12th for the NLC City Summit Conference. It's on the 19th to the 23rd.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager's report?
Mayor, I will have three items, just, just an overview of those items. Do have an update from Department of Transportation regarding the push-button project near the intersection of State Row 80 and 27, here in front of City Hall, for the safety crossing. Also, a status report on the triangle, oh, no, just, and also a status report on the triangle as well, so I can share that information with the Commission via email. The, we have some roofing repairs that needs to be done and addressed here at City Hall during, I think, last month when we received a lot of, lot of rain. We found a lot of areas of weakness that we are getting water intruding into the building, and I will be addressing that issue as well. And then the last item, we're, we're here, just internally, we're trying to really make some things work and what is the best way our community economic development, economic development and business offices operating, all of the departments that report within that division. And right now, we are toying with Neighborhood Services Department, and maybe couching some, all of those activities within the Neighborhood Services Department. And also, I'm going to introduce, as part of the Neighborhood Services, the team that's going to be working within that department, that's going to be headed, led by Mr. Collins, who is currently our Economic and Business Development Director. Also introducing our new Code Enforcement Officer, who is coming in from Public Works Department. We've made this transfer, this upward promotion from within internally. And also Ms. Vent, who holds that office together, as well as their office assistant. So I will introduce them during the Manager's Report, but I've also just done that as well. They are not strangers to the Commission and to the public. However, we've made some internal, we're making some, trying to make some changes. And because it's not all economic development that's coming from that department. They are, the minor home repair program, once that is done, it's going to come to that department. So we're, we're just trying to toy with some things to see what is the best fit. But I will introduce that team to the Commission and the general public during the Commission meeting. And the last item I will discuss, I'll share with the Commission, is the Village by the Lake feasibility study. I have that draft document to share with the Commission and, and where we're going regarding the Village by the Lake and possible RFP or ITV, the right procurement to, to find a body in order to move forward. Because what we did find out, I'm trying, I guess I'm getting it all in now, and I might have to talk as much during the meeting. The Village by the Lake, the ecotourism, we're not going to do any hiring. We're just going to find, may put it out on the street and see who's out there that's already doing this type of work that will be able to move the city in a direction that it needs to go, coupled with what we are doing, what's already taking place that's a part of the feasibility study that you all get an opportunity to review and read. So those are the items for the City Manager's Report. I, I covered it in five minutes. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and I do appreciate it. Any question from this Commission in reference to City Manager's report? You're non? We'll continue. City Attorney's report?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I would just remind you all, as we wind down the year, that you have until December the 31st to get in your four hours of ethics training. If you have not been able to obtain those hours through the Florida League of Cities or local League of Cities or national conferences that you've attended, I'm happy to sit with any one of you and do that individually. So feel free to let me know so that we can make sure that you report those to the clerk, so that she can report it to the Ethics Commission for Palm Beach County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Last Friday, Halloween, Commissioner King and I, we did receive the dowels and references at the training from the Palm Beach County Legal Cities.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue moving, there was another item. And this was supposed to be the presentation tonight. We want to talk about property tax real quick and just tap on that very high-level information and what that looks like for the City of South Bay. So as you all know, the 2026 general fund expenditures for the City of South Bay Of that, only 14.25% of that is homesteaded property here in the City of South Bay. That's coming from a population of 4,984 people. Now, the percentage of the Palm Beach County overall total population in South Bay is only 0.32%. And from a numbers perspective, which is very, we have 1,007 addresses, residential addresses, part of the papa, and number of addresses that are non-residential is 328. 2026 general fund expense expenditure per citizen is $566 per citizen. 2025 total city tax and Palm Beach County fire rescue is 9.760 mils. Saying that because, you know, we cap out at 10 mils. This is all centered around the proposed property tax legislation. So the, the piece I really want to share, just in working the numbers, is, hold on, I gotta get to that one piece. Should the property tax amendment or legislation is approved, the total impact, scheduled impact to the City of South Bay would be approximately, should city tax reduction, if the homestead is waived, including Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, is $165,512. That's with the understanding that the City of South Bay only collects for property tax 400, excuse me, 600, approximately $580,000 in property taxes. What each resident, based upon those numbers, are responsible for, the city tax per citizen is $143. So we would have, which, in order to continue operating, providing the services that the city currently provides to the residents, we will have to raise our taxes, our mileage rate. We have to rate, adjust our mileage rate for homestead tax loss, 11.3901, which we, we won't be able to recover that $165,000 due to the 10-mil cap. I am sharing this because $165,000 is more than two people. It, not only is it two people, it is also our senior services. There are programs, there are activities that we would lose here in the City of South Bay. So Mayor, Commission, and public that's listening in, I'm only here educating you on this information. I want to share it with you. But it is important and imperative that you have a full understanding of what property tax, the elimination or the adjustment of property taxes mean to the City of South Bay. So just giving you that information, I'd be more than happy to share these numbers with you so that you can educate the residents to what that would look like here in the City of South Bay and the impact that it would have, and the possibility of trying to recover $165,000 when that is not possible. So that's all I have from the Manager's Office, Mayor, Commission, Mayor, Commission.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you for bringing this up. Ladies and gentlemen, you, you know, you have heard a lot talking about property tax, about government, and others have been talking about property tax as well. There's a lot of proposals going on now in reference to property taxes. But I want to make sure that you understand exactly the effect it will have on the different programs within the City of South Bay. Hope that I helped the manager to make sure he print all the information that he talking about tonight in reference to property taxes and what effect it will have on the City of South Bay. So therefore, you could be able to educate the other residents in the City of South Bay and others on the outside as well, the effect that it will have on your city, City of South Bay. So just pay attention to, to the government and others talking about his property tax, and legislators as well, talking on property taxes. Ask questions, ask questions in reference to the service that is being run in your cities. Please, please, if you need some additional information, you need this information, and Mr. Cal is talking about it, we'll make it available for you. In order to talk about it, discuss it with anyone that you so desire, even your family member, your friends, or whosoever, discuss that with them in reference to property tax and the effect we have on your city. I didn't say other cities, your city, about the programs that's being run at this present time. Mr. Manager, thank you. That was a wonderful report, sir. I do appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll continue with our, with our workshop tonight. Future agenda items. You're non? We have nine minutes. Ms. Jacob, I know you have, you want to talk to us tonight. You think that'll be enough time for you at this present time in the workshop, or you want to wait till 7 o'clock? You can do it now? Okay. Will you mind coming up, please?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening.
To Mayor Calz, the Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk, and to our attorney. I came tonight to give you a follow-up from, first of all, my name is Dr. Wilhelmina Jacobs. I reside at 13820 Sheffield Street, Wellington, Florida, 33414. I'm representing Lake Shore Middle School tonight. Vicky asked that we do a follow-up and a survey to tell how you did during City Government Day. Well, I came to report to you that I do have a report card, and this information was gathered by the children. They said that you were punctual, you were knowledgeable, you had interaction, you had good voice pitch, and your appearance. So your final grade, your report card grade is an A. I did a survey. They didn't allow me to participate. I just recorded the final answers. And they were impressed with the way you all prepared yourself. Your presentation was good. And the thing that it treated me the most was, they said you all were clean. They said all of you all were dressed like, they thought that y'all had uniform, but I told them that was not planned. So you got an A for your appearance. Now, the feedback, the students were impressed with the way you presented, as I fore stated. The Mayor and the Commission was very knowledgeable. I didn't tell them I gave y'all copies of the questions. The environment was very nice and conducive. That you all were very, very, very nice to them. I don't know what else they would have thought. Then they asked, where do y'all get your uniforms from? I said they were not uniforms. Again, they just coincidentally. And they were very intrigued, and they were very pleased with the fact that the City of Belgrade and the City of South Bay came together. That was not planned either, it was just a providential will of God. The only complaint they had was that, that they did not have enough time. And my, my personal babies were very, very, very jealous. Because the beginning of the planning day was for only my students to participate. But the door was open, all of the students, I don't know how it happened, but all of the 7th grader and 8th grade students came through their auditorium that day. So the 6th graders got in the way of it, and I got in trouble, but it's good trouble. So what we're planning to do, when you all come back off of your trips and fighting with the legislature, that we were planning another day or days where you can come and interact with the student. And they said they don't want a partial day. They want a full day. City Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. Also, they said, thank Ms. Vicky for the food. And the other comment they made was that Ms. Vicky was outnumbered by the men, and she didn't get a chance to talk. So the next time, they want Ms. Vicky to have an opportunity to talk. Also, you are on our Facebook page, Lake Shore Middle School. If you have Facebook, go to Lake Shore Middle School Facebook page, and you will see the news write-up, and you will also see your photos. And I brought copies of the photos and the news report. Also, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Polk, you all didn't get your book because I didn't realize you all were coming. So I did not want to shortchange you all, so I went and I purchased a book for the two of you.
Ah, thank you.
And I autographed the book. So this is for Vice Mayor, and this is for Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jacob. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mayor Calz, I bought two extra books, so you can give them to whichever man you so desire.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob.
I have to leave because I'm on program to speak in 20 more minutes on the educational night. So I am going to have to excuse myself. And here are your reports, your report card, City Manager. Ms. Vicky, here's copies of the newsprint, and here's a copy of your survey and your grade.
Before you leave, we have a, a video for you.
You asked for the video?
I'm the Vice, I'm the City Manager. I'm the Vice Director for you, okay? Look, you're gonna ask me, I'm gonna point to the lady to the left in that pink jacket. She runs City Hall. But on a regular basis... But on a regular basis, if you're looking at, I'm just answering your question, sir, the City Manag-, the City Manager, myself, I run City Hall. So, I'm the City Manager and Chief Executive Officer, the CEO of the city of South Bay.
How's it like being the mayor?
Generally, because as you are, that give me more energy to want to do more and more things with the city of South Bay along with all the commissioners and our city manager and our staff within the cities. So, to you, to, to, to answer your question there, I love it, I enjoy it, because it's been a director of people. City Manager, Vice Mayor, just stay focused. What we have been purpose to do along with the system of Dr. Jacobs, all the staff that's here at Lake Shore Middle School, is we, we plant this seed, so, and as the seed has been planted, you know, a long life, just continuing to study, do a lot of studying, do a lot of researching, and that seed will one day flourish into a plant, that plant will one day flourish into a tree, and you'll stand like, how we are today, we all start that seed. And so, fertilize yourself, learn as much as you can.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. During Florida City Week, um, to the general public, the Commission did go out to Lake Shore Middle School, Rosenwall, um, they were all around, uh, the tri-city area. And that's just a snippet of what took place at the Lake Shore Middle School, um, at that time. But I know, I know we were kind of going on time, so.
No, we just want to give the, uh, Ms. Jacob, Lake Shore Middle School, and the students a round of applause for accepting us and giving us our opportunity. Yes, ma'am.
If I may, on December the fifth, we are traveling to Florida Memorial University, that's our yearly trip to historical black colleges. And I need two chaperones to go with us on the fifth. I know that you all probably will not be available, because you are traveling during your city league and your legislature. So by Monday, if you have two names, I would appreciate it. City Attorney, we are close to you, so would you go and meet us there, you don't have to drive the bell plate. So if you have two people who would like to travel with us, I would like their names by Monday, because if they're not employees of the school board, we need to clear them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jacob, we appreciate everything, appreciate you all for inviting us to be there, and I think we had a wonderful time. Residents, this is a thing that we do within the city of South Bay, you know, dealing with our kids each and every day. And during the government week, when we had the opportunity to be at Lake Shore Middle School, you know, I think, I know for myself, I had, I had a great time, I know Commissioner Polk and Vice Mayor and City Manager had a wonderful time as well. These are things we're going to continue to do with our kids in the city of South Bay. That Rosenwall Elementary School, at Lake Shore Middle School, at Glaze Central High, we're going to continue to be there for those students. And again, I just want to say thank you, kudos goes out to your kids and, and Commissioners and City Manager staff, thank you all as well. At this present time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the workshop.
So move.
Uh, move by Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. The workshop is adjourned, do anyone have any lead ideas at this present time? Okay, we'll continue. This present time, we'll start with our City Commissioner meeting at November the fourth of twenty twenty-five at seven oh two P M. I want to thank each and every one of y'all for being here tonight, appreciate you for being a part of what takes place in the city of South Bay. Parents, thank you as well, for really just being behind your young peoples, of the things that they're doing in school. And motivate them to want to be, to want to do more, because they know that their parents are behind them. The ones on live feed, thank you as well, we do appreciate you for joining us at this meeting tonight. At this present time, we have a roll call, uh, after we have the roll call, we have the prayer, and then we have the pledge of allegiance of the flag. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk?
President.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
President.
Mayor Cowes.
President, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, City Manager and staff, and we just going to stand at this present time, we have our prayer by our Commissioner Polk, Commissioner slash Pastor Polk.
Father God, we just thank you this evening, God, we thank you for who you are, and for who you always have been, and for who you always will be. But we realizing that you are God, and beside you there are no others. So God, we look to you tonight and ask for wisdom, we ask for insight, we ask for you to give us understanding, and to bless us with the knowledge that is needed to persevere and to progress this great city, the city of South Bay. But God, we just want to ask you tonight, and as you bless every resident, thank you for Dr. Jacob and the, the students out there at Lake Shore, and Mr. Hightower, and the students out there at Rosenwall, Glaze Central Community High School, for the work that they are doing, educating our students. So God, we just ask you tonight, continue to bless the city of South Bay, each and every one of us that represent on this desk. Bless everyone that is a stakeholder in this community, and even to our residents and the babies, we ask you special blessings on them. And without tonight, without closing this prayer, we don't want to forget to say thank you. Because you has been tremendously gracious to us, and we thank you for what you have done for us, and how you have kept us, and how you're helping us to progress this city. So continue to bless us, continue to keep us, and so we ask all these blessings in the masterless, miraculous, magnificent name of our great God, and in Jesus' name, we say thank you.
Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Polk, for that wonderful prayer, I really do appreciate it, because there's a lot of things going on, and we definitely give thanks and praises to God, because, and the reason I say that, because what happened in Jamaica, it could have happened to us as well. But God has spared us to, to, to just override any type of hurricane this year that are coming up in our area here. And again, thank you for that prayer, sir, I do appreciate it. The flo-, uh, disclosure of voting conflict, uh, Commissioner Polk?
I have none.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
None, sir.
Thank you, and non-familiarity, we'll continue our agenda for tonight, presentation proclamation tonight, Madam Clerk, do you have any proclamation tonight?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the commission at this present time, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, I just have one, Mrs. Annie Ifield.
Ms. Ifield, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, residents of South Bay, um, city staff, Annie Ifield with Health and Glaze. I wanted to take this time to personally thank, um, Mr. Kendrick and the senior program for South Bay for supporting our arts on the muck. Uh, it was a wonderful event, I know some of, uh, the residents that participated are here tonight, they had a blast. We had live music, arts and crafts, and stuff like that, so it looks like it's going to be some, a start of something that we'll be doing every year. So I will keep you guys posted, uh, it was funded, um, not only with Health and Glaze, but with Palm Health Foundation as well, who is our funder, uh, for the event. So I wanted to just personally come and say thank you to the seniors, thank you to the, uh, Parks and Rec staff, they did a wonderful job, they supported us one hundred percent. So I wanted to say thank you.
Ms. Annie Ifield, thank you. All the events was taking place at, during that particular week, it was really great. And some of the seniors had the opportunity to sit down and talk to them about what transpired in different events that took place. They said, we really enjoyed ourselves, we love everything they was doing, and I just want to thank you for the event that you put on. Also, the one event that had the senior citizens in, at the County Barn as well, and also the event they had at the La Palms as well. All those events were fantastic, we just want to thank each and every one of y'all, for putting on these adventures, especially for our seniors within the Glaze area here. When a bunch of seniors, I ain't gonna say a bunch of young ladies can get together, and have the fun, have the fun. They really enjoyed themselves, got a scene expression on their face, but I, again, thank you all, continue to do the wonderful thing that y'all doing in the Glaze area, we do appreciate it.
You're welcome, and then I do have some pictures, so once, uh, we did take pictures, so what I'll do is the pictures that I have with some of the seniors, I can send it to you guys.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing is, it's grant season time, so, um, tomorrow, Community, uh, Foundation for Palm Beach and Martin County is going to be having an information session at Student Aces to talk about their upcoming grant process, I think you had to register, but I think if you just come, it'll be fine. It's going, it will be in Belgrade, um, the, the other ones are going to be throughout the county, and then there's one virtual. I don't know if it's too late to sign up for the virtual, but it's an opportunity to get funds in our community. We've had several of our residents, uh, apply and got awarded for those grants from community foundations, so it's that time of the year. So, um, whenever you get a chance, just go to Community Foundation for Palm Beach and Martin County, go to, under Grant Seekers, and you'll see the information about the, um, grant process. Um, the other thing is-
Do you have the time?
Huh? Oh, six o'clock, sorry, six o'clock.
You said it'd be in Belgrade, the library?
Uh-uh, at Student Aces, where the old Bank of Bel-, uh, Bank, oh, Bank of America used to be, yes. And then, um, in December, I'm working with some folks to try to bring a health outreach event in South Bay. So, um, we got a first meeting on Thursday, just to work out the logistics and the details. Once we get that finalized, I'll come back before the commission give you an update.
All right, thank you.
Because I may need to find out like how to go about doing certain things, because some of the screenings that we're doing require, requires an indoor space.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, same to you.
We have one more, sir. Ms. Dorothy Davis.
Ms. Davis.
Good evening to everyone, uh, City Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and everyone. I just have a question.
Your name and your address, please.
The City Manager mentioned-
Ms. Davis? Your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dorothy Davis, two one five Southwest Ninth Avenue, South Bay, Florida, three three four nine three.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my, uh, concern and my question is, City Manager mentioned about the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, if I'm correct? I just want to know, uh, the citizens, if the citizens doesn't, does not meet or come up to that amount of money, am I explaining it right? We will be responsible for a hundred and forty-three dollars, that's per citizen?
No, ma'am, the impact, we were talking about the impact of property taxes. Should the property tax amendment, um, ballot winds up going before the voters, and it's passed, there's a potential impact to the city of South Bay of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, if the ballot issue, ballot passes. What, a hundred and six, in our current two point eight million dollar budget, and in that add valorem component of the budget for approximately five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it is a impact to each resident, with your contribution, I shouldn't say impact, your current contribution per resident is a hundred and forty-three dollars. So it's a twofold, but I can, we can talk more, and I can show you all the information, so you could see it, um, both sides. If it passes, and if it doesn't pass, what that looks like mathematically for the city of South Bay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And this will not take effect to twenty twenty-six?
I can't tell you the timeframe, because the ballot language hasn't been, um, provided.
Okay, my reason for asking, because we have already received our tax information that we're supposed to be paying as resident, those that are homeowners-
Yes, ma'am.
Have already received that.
You receive your twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tax bill, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, so whenever that ballot language makes the bill, that would be a part of when it will start. But it's a decision that's going to the voters.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Madam Clerk?
That's it, sir.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you for the one that spoke tonight. We'll continue with our agenda for tonight, consent agenda, the consent agenda, I know we had one additional resolution sixty-three dash twenty twenty-five. As far as the time, am I correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
All righty, uh, may I have a motion and second to approve, do we have any question in reference to consent agenda from this commission? You're non, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, any question for the consent agenda at this present time? You're non, Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, it passes by all three, uh, Commissioners at present time. We'll continue with resolution sixty-one dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of South Bay, Florida authorizing the City Manager's execution of the attached State of Florida Department of Commerce Grant Agreement, number H L three one three, attached hereto as Exhibit A, providing for adoption and representation, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I have a motion and second to move resolution sixty-one dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval.
Move.
Move by Commissioner Polk?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor McKelvin, any question for this resolution from this commission? You're non, Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, it passes, I thank you, Madam Clerk, it passes by all three Commissioners, present, uh, continue on, resolution sixty-two dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the city of South Bay, Florida, relating to finances, providing for amendments to the fiscal year budget beginning October one, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, approving associated budget amendments, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, may I have a motion and second to move resolution sixty-two dash twenty twenty-five to the floor for discussion and approval?
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, in addition, questions for resolution sixty-two dash twenty twenty-five before this commission? You're non, Madam Clerk, uh, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Commissioner, it passes by all Commissioners, present. Resolution sixty-three dash twenty twenty-five, Madam Clerk, or you the City Manager?
A resolution of the City Commission of the city of South Bay, Florida, counseling the, the December second, twenty twenty-five regular city commission meeting, providing for adoption and representation, providing for an effective date.
Uh, may I have a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, motion and second to move resolution sixty-three, sixty-two or sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three dash two, uh, twenty twenty-five, to the floor for discussion, and reference to counseling the meeting in the month of December.
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk, in addition, questions for this resolution at this present time? It passed, uh, Madam Clerk?
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cowes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, City Manager Campbell. Uh, at this present time, Rosenwall Elementary School, Mr. Hightower, thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate you, sir.
Uh, first of all, I'd say greetings to the elected officials, uh, first of all, I'd say thank you for coming out to support Rosenwall, it means so much, um, for our students to put a name with the face. And not only that, but, uh, we started our student council, uh, program, um, this actually week right here. So that means so much to our students for you coming out, supporting Rosenwall and supporting the students. I actually had a conversation with one, one of the students this morning, and one of the students, um, stated that they would love to become a City Commissioner, like Commissioner Polk. Yes, yes. And, and, and so, um, I'm just coming to give you an update on Rosenwall, of where we are right now, of course, you know, you know, we're three, four months into the, the year already, and so it's been a lot of, um, assessment that has been taking place, um, with our students, as well as with our staff preparing our students. Um, this week right here, um, we have a, a couple of, um, grade levels who are attending the trip at the Dollar Hand, and also a trip at the South Bay Library, um, at the end of this week. We have our sec meeting on November the twelfth, uh, we have Thanksgiving break, can you believe it's Thanksgiving already? And so therefore, we have our Thanksgiving break, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth, where students will actually have an entire week off of school. But, um, as I stated too early, the, the weeks are extremely rolling by so quickly and fast. On November eleventh, uh, we at, we are at the end of our trimester, and so report cards are due for those, um, who have students that are in elementary. And so therefore, next week, report cards are due, um, and we also have a P D D day with no school, where we, uh, will actually be planning to enrich and remediate our students for the next several months. And F S Qs and U S As, those are assessments that's ongoing, and I could tell you that our students have been performing- And I could tell you that our students have been performing extremely well on their FSQs and USA assessments, where they have been outperforming um the schools in the district and also outperforming the schools um in the county. So I, I am extremely proud.
Amen.
And at the end of the month, November the twentieth, we have our Fall Field Day. We call that Turkey Trout Day, in which we will be providing turkeys to um some of our families in the area. Any questions?
No, no, you were talking pretty fast and we thank you for sharing that information. But you have done a fantastic, a great job. And I just want to say to you, thank you. I think you were chosen as the principal of the Glaze area and we want to congratulate you, sir. Congratulations to you, sir. Your staff had done a grand fantastic, a great job at Rosenwald Elementary School. And thank you for allowing us to come in. The city government, we, they just come in to your kids and your, your teachers as well, sir. We enjoyed it. Same we told uh Ms. Jacob that we enjoy going to Lakeshore and enjoy coming up to your, to your school as well, sir. Again, kudos to you and your staff at Rosenwald Elementary School. We do appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
City Clerk's report.
I'm sorry, sir. The agenda pack is.
Wait, we go back. I'm sorry. I missed one. Sorry. It was uh, I think it was financial report, I think that was uh to taper it. Let me have a motion to taper, sir.
Before, before you motion to table, you know, this is one of those items that we just going to receive and file. So let me, if there are any questions that comes with moving forward. It will, as you can see on the presentation, it says received and filed. But that information is going to be a part of your agenda as well. So if there are any specific questions that the commission may have uh for the treasurer or the city manager, we can answer those questions. However, it is being presented to the commission as received and filed. But the commission doesn't have to take any action on those uh items, accounts payable report. But you did, you do have it for your records.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. That's great. Great. Really good.
I already know about it. I'm glad we're doing it.
That's wonderful. So uh, you made a motion to table?
We don't need to make, you don't have to.
No need to. Okay, we good. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, and I appreciate that, City Manager Campbell. Finance Director and Treasurer, thank you all for working together in reference to the finance in the city of South Bay. And I just want to, while we talking about the finance, I just want to reiterate what I said before. You hear a lot of negative things is going on about finance in different cities. In this city of South Bay, your money, your, the, the, the finance in this city is solid. Solid, solid, solid. No one taking anything from this city. No, no theft going on in this city here. And I, I can, I stand firmly on, on what I'm saying tonight. The Finance Director you have in here, when a report come in and references a penny missing, he want to find out where that penny is. And I thank him for that. I really thank him for that. So therefore, anything come about the finance report, you ask those question in reference to it. But again, don't worry about your finance, because I'm gonna continue to, continue to, continue to say this here. I'm not going to jail for messing with public money. I'm not doing that. None whatsoever. I'm letting you know that. So please, your money is safe in the city of South Bay. Thank you. Thank you, Finance Director. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you, City Manager. We continue with our uh agenda for tonight. The City Clerk's report.
Yes, sir. Travel packets will be ready November thirteenth uh for the NLC City Summit uh in Utah, Salt Lake, Utah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, City Manager's report.
Alright, Mayor. Also, your legislative con, Florida Legal City's Legislative Conference is taking place on December fourth and fifth in Orlando. And sharing that with you because your file, your bills or your appropriations requests have been filed. Representative Weinberger, Meg Weinberger has signed on to them. Senator Berman has signed on to them. They are for the improvements along Palm Beach Road. And, oh, I shouldn't have done that one, cause I forgot them and I didn't have them in front of me. But you, all of the appropriations requests that has been approved by this commission have support in Tallahassee and we do feel good about them. The lobbyist, Jordan Connors, is already in Tallahassee, working um with staff and some of the elected officials that are there. So our items are moving and just to let you all know, you are ahead of the, ahead of the game for some other cities that's similar size. Now, as large cities of co- of course, but you are ahead of the game there for cities similar size in getting your items moving forward. I did want to, just a period in the legislative items, just to give you that update. Number two, this is the feasibility study for you all to review as part of the Village by the, Village by the Lake. And the opportunities that's gonna be set aside for the city of South Bay. We interviewed um two candidates for the ecotourism role. We did not accept any of those um candidates. We in internally had conversations um to seek professional services, putting out a bid for professional services that will assist in carrying out the items as a part of your feasibility study focused on ecotourism. Now, some of those people may return, however, there's going to be a very clean and clear um direction as part of the contractual services, a bidding process and the contractual services process and how we um we could move forward with the Village by the Lake. Ecotourism and cultural destination we're creating here in the city of South Bay. The other items I spoke about for the roofing here at City Hall, um Tanna Park, the Commerce Center and the water plant, there are some areas that we're going to get addressed over the time period. Just, there are some leaks that we need to address before we have any other issues going forward. Talked about the F dot push button. I did share with the commission as a part of that study that went to F dot for the push button. We were gonna have one here in front of City Hall and the other by Tanna Park to cross over to the Commerce Center. The one by Commerce Center in Tanna Park is not going to happen due to the proposed changes of the triangle that DOT is working out where the bridge is and the turning lanes coming on to sack, second and first. The spacing, adequate spacing is not there. Then you have the light at twenty-seven. So that walk path has been eliminated at this time. But it could possibly come back once all of the designing has taken place. So once we get to a ninety percent place, I will share all of the information. That's just one copy, Mayor. I didn't bring all the other copies with me. Um, I didn't only print it one copy. I think that covers everything that was discussed without me repeating myself all over again. You will see in this city some areas, the commission approved the agreement with Winn and Sons, piggybacking off of the county contract. Winn and Sons did some work. You will see some areas, but I think that's going to be discussed further as we go through the meeting. Mayor Commission, um I also just uh personally and professionally thank you for resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-five. Canceling the December second meeting. Um, that's do, that is appreciated. And that's all I have from the managers. Uh, it's part of the managers' report.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Any questions from the Commissioner, Vice Mayor McKelvin?
Yes, Mr. Manager, can you give us an update on the racetrack? I can't. I don't have one. Um, they start and then they stop. We, we're no longer to hold up. The county is no longer to hold up. I think it's internal. I, I think it's internal, but I can't say that it's not DOT. But I know that light is not um operational yet. The new intersection light, but I cannot say who it is anymore, cause I know it's not the city nor Palm Beach County. So the water pressure is there. All the things that we knew about has, is moving forward. I just can't tell you where the holdup is.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Campbell and Vice Mayor. I went, I seen a couple of vehicles, you know, parked in the parking lot. I went by there and I knocked on their door and no one came to the door. So apparently I'm having a hard time by talking to those individuals who be at that particular site there. I don't know if they be in the back or wherever, sir, but I tried to have a conversation with who's that was there, but I wasn't uh successful in doing that, sir. Alright, thank you. Mr. Manager, I just want to thank you all. The commission, I want to thank you as well, the residents. Since they have been doing the work within the city of South Bay from wins, I've been going in the site, the sites where they're working at it. Uh, was that third? Yeah, Northway Third. I was over in that particular area there and I know Commissioner Pope, he was, he have concern about all of these streets around here. And the works have been taking place in reference to the city and I, I thank those individuals for the work they're doing. I know because I have gotten numerous complaints and reference on not, right there, well, Northway Third, but there by uh Dollar General. With that little dip in there, a lot of people been complaining about that particular area. So that area have been taken care. And the side street there, it have been taken care as well. And a bit further down on uh Third Street, Third Avenue is that others, other areas had bumps in it. Those areas have been taken care as well. Uh, citizens, I just want to let you, let you understand that we, we hear everything that y'all said about the streets in the city of South Bay. And we had talked to you over and over about the finance, but we are working diligent. And I want to thank uh Ms. Bryant. I want to thank Senator Berman, uh, other representative and our our individuals who work with us in Tallahassee as well on the thing that they are doing. Each and every day up in Tallahassee, we make sure that we're trying to get more and more money to do our roles in the city of South Bay. The infrastructure is bad, we know that, but we, your, your comments don't go void. Your complaints don't go void. We hear what you're saying and we're working diligently trying to make sure that we are trying to make some, make, make some of these streets rideability in reference to the bumps and the humps in the city of South Bay. So if you see these individuals working in the city of South Page, paving certain areas there, those are the area that we're working on at this present time. But we're gonna continue to improve our streets in the city of South Bay. Thank you all. I appreciate that. Commissioner, thank you as well, City Manager Campbell.
I knew there was one more, Mayor, that I have him here and I need to let him know. I would like to introduce officially our new uh code enforcement officer um promotion out of the Public Works Department, Mr. Andrew Mann. He is gonna be, this is your code enforcement officer and he's gonna uh he, he's trying to be kind, but he, he understands his, his role and he is uh gonna be out. Also, um when you're calling up to City Hall and you're getting that kind voice um in the code enforcement side, you have Ms. Ayana Bent that's also gonna be supporting with code enforcement. And, and their supervisor, Mr. Napoleon Collins, um also um here. Just, I'm sharing all of those things with you because they're all South Bay residents. And they have a connection to South Bay beyond just that what, yeah. So that's just wanted to share that and we are exploring with the name. You may see some things with neighborhood services. The title changing, but we, like I said, we're just trying to find the best fit. I want to make sure you all recognize your code enforcement officer here in the city of South Bay. Um, that's gonna do, I think he's gonna do a fantastic job for us. So thank you, Mayor. That was the item I did want to share with you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Andrew, thank you as well for stepping in the position also. And residents, please work with our code enforcement officer. I know that in the past, we had had peoples come down to our code enforcement office, but we want to make sure our, our city is clean and continue to be clean. You see something that taking place on your streets there, hey, call them out. Call them out and reference the street, your streets. We're tired of looking terrible. We're tired of looking bad. We want to make sure our streets uh look beautiful. And something that I, hopefully, we'll be able to bring back up again, the beautification or, or committee within the city of South Bay. I think it's needed. I think that those individuals can bring some good points to us and reference the thing that took place. I know Ms. Davis was a part of that particular committee during that particular time. The other was a part of that committee. And we're gonna try to recreate that particular uh beautific, beautification committee within the city of South Bay. And all those that want to be a part of it, please join. Because due to the fact that you can give us avenues, some of the things that we don't see, you will be able to see it. And we're trying to make sure that we address it through our code enforcement department or through our public works department, or whatever it takes in order for us to make sure our streets, our city is clean uh at this present time. Again, thank you all, Mr. Manager. Thank you for your report as well. City Attorney's report.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, my report is made during the workshop. Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and I love South Bay.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. We do appreciate it. We love you as well and thank you for the work that you are doing for us within the city of South Bay. You keep us on track. We really do appreciate that. We're never gonna fight against you. Never gonna fight against you, cause you making sure that we do the right thing from a legal aspect and we do appreciate you. Thank you. We'll continue with the future general items here in non. Commissioner for the comment for the good of the order. We'll start with uh Commissioner Pope and then Vice Mayor and then myself. At this present time, Commissioner Pope.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out and being a part of the meeting tonight. Uh, I'm gonna piggyback on what the, the mayor said about the uh Winn and Sons in the neighborhood. My good of the order is, I feel good about those roads being repaired. Cause if you spend any amount of time in the chamber since I've been here, you know, that's been an ongoing conversation. But through the support of these commissioners and our, our city manager, public works director and everybody, we've been able to accomplish it and that's, that makes me feel good. And so I say to you, uh, my colleagues up here on the dais, I, I'm very pleased. And I think that's the same report I've had the past three meetings. And so, and um, Mr. Manager, he knows I, we email back and forth about different things and no, those roles was one of them. And so I feel very good about it. God bless you all. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope. We appreciate those comments, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to thank everyone for coming out. Yes, you have a question? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
Standing here, I just wanted to ask a question. The new contractors that we have as far as picking up the garbage and the trash. What days, I really don't know. What day do they come and pick up the trash?
Mondays and Thursdays. Mondays and Thursdays.
I know they pick up the garbage Monday and Thursday. I'm talking about the trash.
Oh, oh, Wednesdays. The bulk.
Wednesday?
Yes.
This coming Wednesday?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a lot of trash at the end of our street, South West Ninth Avenue.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure they come down there.
To add on.
Yes, ma'am.
To add on what the commissioner is saying, Ms. Davis, our public works director was to that address today to address that particular matter, because it caught my attention as well. They moved it from their, their address down on that end there and it looked terrible there and they got concrete and everything else there. And I spoke to the public works director. He told me that he was going down there. So he did meet with that resident today in reference to that particular matter. So hopefully, as Vice Mayor and Commissioner Pope stated, that hopefully they'll be able to pick that stuff tomorrow. I don't know if they're gonna be able to pick it all because of a certain amount. I think, how many yards, Mr. Manager? Six yards only and that's it. So they picked six yards up and then the next time they come back, pick up the balance of it. So that's what they've been doing. I'm kind of weary about that concrete they have in there. I'm very weary about that one. So they should have gotten a dumpster in reference to that particular item there. The guy that pushed, the guy that was doing this saw it. He pushed all that stuff in that area and, you know, and it looked bad. Don't get me wrong, Ms. Davis, it looked bad. I know that you live in that area. I know that uh Pastor Bean live in that area. I live in that area. It does look bad. So Mrs. Kirk did address it today with that particular resident and we know who the resident is. So he did have a conversation with them today.
And also by reason, my concern is that the children are getting in that area playing with it.
Playing on it, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You absolutely correct about that. Thank you for bringing that up. But it was addressed today by our public works director.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, Madam. No problem. Continue, uh, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for that. Um, yes, have a great night. Uh, happy holidays to you and your families. Mr. Mann, welcome. We're looking for big names from you. Also, Ms. Matt, welcome again. Now, congratulations to you guys for your promotions. Um, continue to work hard for the city of South Bay. We love you. Uh, may God continue to bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do appreciate the comment from uh Commissioner Pope and you, sir. Again, you know, we do, I did always both what they said tonight. You know, they're very concerned about this city. They work diligently really hard to try to make sure they do, we do the right thing within this city because we was elected by the residents and want to make sure that we do the work to please our residents in the city of South Bay. Madam Attorney, thank you. We do appreciate the work you do each and every day for us within the city of South Bay. Not only the city commission meeting and when the city manager call you, Vice, or you call him and trying to make sure we have everything in place. Yeah, we do appreciate it. Thank you for the work that you do. And Resident, thank you as well. Ms. Fuse, I'm sorry, you had your hand up? And resident, thank you as well. Ms. Fuse, I'm sorry, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'm sorry. I just got a question. What does that fair go called?
You heard the resolution that was, was approved by the commissioners for next, for this month? I don't know whether Mr. Manager have gotten the answer from that particular company at this present time.
Yeah. The opening night is Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
And to be here, what, for five days?
Yes.
Seven days?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's it.
It's going to be more circus this year, too.
I just want to thank, Ms. Bryant, thank you and Senator for the work that y'all doing for the city of South Bay. Not only the city, but the entire Glazer. You work diligent. For all three of these cities in the Glazer, we do appreciate it. I thank that Senator Berman, not the Senator for Pahokee, but all us in this thing together, you know, we want to thank you then. Representative Ryan Burger, want to thank her for the work she doing as well. And our consultant, he does a fantastic job each and every year for us, and he, he's in Tallahassee now. He's working, and we do appreciate him also. But I just want to say to each and every one of y'all, I just wanted me to write a message from me uh tonight. And I just want to say to, to all the residents in the city of South Bay, as we welcome the month of November first, I want, November, I want to take a moment to share my heartfelt gratitude with each and, each of you. This season remind us of the importance of families, communities, and the many blessings we share here in our great city of South Bay. Additionally, as a father of veterans, Nov- November also allowed us to honor the courageous men and women who have served our country as we observe Veteran Day. Their service and willingness to risk their life to protect our freedom and fight for our God-given rights. For that, we owe our veterans endless gratitude. As we gather with families and friends at Thanksgiving, let's remember the things we are for and extend compassion to those in need. Together, let's continue to build a strong, supportive community where every resident can strive. On behalf of the city of South Bay, I wish you and your family a safe, joyful, and blessed Thanksgiving. And to all our veterans, thanks you for your service and your sacrifice. May God continue to bless our veterans. May God continue to bless your families. And may you enjoy your Thanksgiving. And veteran, again, thank you. Kudos to each and every one of you all. At this present time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting adjourned.